It's seven. It's seven o'clock and we are back. Back on our regular meeting and. Welcome everyone and welcome to the city of Milpitas Planning Commission. Meeting August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. This is the seven o'clock regular meeting. And as a public service announcement, any members of the public who may wish to. Join us this evening to comment on items under the public hearing, you may do so. Via the the link that's on tonight's agenda and calling meeting to order. And the next agenda item here is Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Seradella would you lead us in the pledge?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
America.
Stands to the.
Which stands.
One nation. Thank you, Commissioner Seradella and everyone who participated. And the next agenda item here is roll call. Would the commission's commission secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So let's start with Commissioner Albana.
President.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Present.
Commissioner Belong.
Present.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Present.
Commissioner Sierdella.
Present.
Commissioner Galang. And Chair Tao.
Here, thank you. Okay, and the next agenda item here is Conflict of Interest Declaration. Would the City Attorney for the Commissioners, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I ask whether any of the commissioners have a financial or personal conflict of interest on any of the items for you tonight? I'll start with, I guess Commissioner Alon's not here at the moment, so I'll start with Commissioner Serdella.
Oh, no.
Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Albana.
Okay, none.
Commissioner Belong.
None.
Commissioner Alcorn.
None.
Vice Chair Chuan.
None.
And Chair Tao.
None.
Let the record like none to that question with the exception of Commissioner Galang, he is not present.
Thank you. And moving on to the next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, any changes? See none. Staff, any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes to tonight's agenda, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vice Chair Chuan and the second by Commissioner Albana. And I'll go down the go down for the commissioners vote. Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Galang. Commissioner Galang. We'll circle back to him. Commissioner Seradella.
Aye.
Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well circling back to Commissioner Galang. Are you able to join the meeting?
Okay. I don't see that he is a panelist or an attendee.
Okay, all right, so. Motion passes with six eyes when and one. One not now, one member not not available. Thank you. And the next agenda item here is announcements. Commissioners, any announcements? Vice Chair.
None.
Okay, and Commissioner Alcorn. Any announcements?
I had surgery on Monday and so I'm still recovering. So if I talk weird, that's why, because it was surgery near my jaw.
Well, Commissioner. Well, we will we'll make a note of that and we will all send along our good wishes to your to your health and well being.
It was not a planned surgery.
We're glad you're joining us this evening and we'll send along some care package in the near future. And Commissioner Belong, any announcements?
None.
Thank you. And by the way, your video quality is definitely improved. And Commissioner Seradella.
None.
Okay, Commissioner Galang, are you back in? Not hearing it? Okay, and Commissioner Albana?
None, none, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And announcements, Director, any announcements from staff?
One quick announcement. Some of you may have received or a text or heard otherwise. The city will be hosting a what's called a Civic Leadership Academy. It will start at the end of this month on September twenty second run. For about nine weeks through mid-November. And this is sort of a behind that we're kind of billing it or describing it as a behind the scenes look at how the city. Operates. So I know they have different sessions planned with each department to come through and talk about what we do. You know, what our mission is, how how our operations run. And you know, talk about city budget and CIP, all the things that we we do as staff to. And city and this is being run from city manager's office. So it's it's ideal for commissioners. And I know an email went out earlier today from the Recreation Services Department about this. So if you're interested. The the link to sign up for that was in the email. I also send a follow up email as well. The one thing I noticed is that the the meetings are going to be held on Wednesday night, so there will be some. Conflict with a few Planning Commission meetings and. They they may have scheduled it, so there isn't a conflict, but I'll I'll check with them to see. But anyway, I and if if not for you, if it's anyone else who's interested in how the city runs, I think would. Find this useful. Yes, Commissioner Chuan.
Just question who's you said it's, you know, being put on by the city manager's office. Just curious who's going to be the primary trainers and instructors?
Well, I know that I I was that one of the nights, I think it's in October, November, I was invited. So all the directors of the departments have been invited at least one of the nights. They've paired us up, so I think I I'll be doing it the same night as the building director, for example, and. We'll come and just give a small presentation about our. You know, our departments, how we run, how we do things. But it goes a little bit beyond that where I, you know, like the Public Works Director will come in and talk to you about city facilities and. How those are funded and how those are maintained and on those sorts of things. So. It's it's meant to be light. They called it a fun nine week course, a fun nine week workshop. And I I think it will, I don't know about fun, but it will be very interesting. There's a lot, as you all are aware, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes at the city.
If I may interrupt this for a second, if I may request that Milpitas IT. If you may send Commissioner Galang another invite. Looks like the gentleman is having a little difficulty signing. Getting getting logged logged in, so.
Okay, I'll do that. Can you please post his email address in the chat so I have it?
I can do that really. I can do that really quickly. Or Liz, or if you have it there.
Um. Matias, I'll take care of this. Don't worry.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. And so Director, if you will restart wherever you left off.
Oh, no, I I think that was a good place for me to end. So. Well, yeah, just letting you know that there is a citizens academy coming up in the dates and encourage you to participate if you're so inclined.
Director Thomas, I have a question. So how long will it run? Just an hour or two?
Yeah, I believe it's an hour, maybe ninety minutes for each of those nights. And I I should also note that if anyone in the from the public is interested. It's open to Milpitas residents and business owners eighteen years and older. And it's a formal class and at the end you'll get a certificate that you've passed and. You you will know everything about the city that you ever wanted to know and and then and many things you probably didn't want to know. About the city. And many cities do this sort of thing to train their not only their commissioners, but just and anyone. You know, again, it kind of goes back to our previous meeting. We're having an informed. Group of citizens that kind of know how the city runs. Hopefully it will make people more effective in their comments and our public hearings.
Okay, thank you, Director Thomas. And. So we're moving on to the next agenda item. That's a public forum. Those interested are invited to address Planning Commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda. Orally via Zoom webinar instructions above. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the recording secretary's records. And comments may be limited to three minutes or less. Is an item not listed on the agenda? On the agenda, no responses required from city staff or the planning commission and no action can be taken. Planning Commission may instruct the staff or to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Ms. Medina, do we have any members of the public in queue?
Chair, there are no members of the public for public forum this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And. Next agenda item here is new business and the first item here is the. Receive the receive a status update presentation on the Milpitas Metro specific plan that test update and Director, if you will.
Thank you, Chair Tao. So we have tonight for this presentation, our Metro or Task Plan Manager Kevin Riley, who you have met before. Needs no no introduction necessarily, but Kevin, of course, is the was a longtime. Planner and Community Development Director at the City of Santa Clara. And once he retired, he. Has helped that city as well as been helping Milpitas for the past. More than over a year, almost two years with the update of our metro specific plan. And of course, we have consultants on board, but these specific plans tend to be rather. Waiting and need a lot of focus. And so we've been very fortunate to have Kevin on board, sort of steering the ship. And he has prepared a few slides and will present them. As I mentioned in our previous meeting. Tonight is sort of focused is very much focused on long range planning. Most of the time. When we're meeting with you, we're looking at specific development projects. And as we talked about those projects, one of the things we analyze as staff is whether or not they're consistent with the general plan. And then right underneath that. We if if it happens to be located in the area around the bar station within the boundaries of the metro plan, we will also include a table for. Consistency with policies in that plan. And so the metro plan is actually an update to the older. Transit area specific or task which was adopted more than ten years ago as a. You know, it it needed a little bit refreshing itself. And so we're focused in on particular areas and Kevin will share. Information about that and we welcome your questions and your comments. And Kevin also has the timeline for finishing up this project, which will happen before the end of the year. I'll turn it over to you, Kevin.
Thank you, Ned. Hello, Chair Tao, planning commissioners. It's good to be with you. I think we were last year gave you a formal presentation in the end of April at your meeting. And, you know, a lot of what I have in the slides are things you've already seen. But I do want to touch on some of the basics, just because I know we have public out there that's not as well as informed. As the, you know, leadership of the city is. So I'll touch on some of that. First, just, you know, looking at this slide, this intro slide that we use over and over again. You know, it's always interesting, I think, to look at aerial photographs. You can kind of see where we are at any point in time. You know, this one, you can see the BART station and its parking garage right in the center of the picture. You know, off to the left across. You know, the street and across the light rail line. You know, you don't see all of the buildings that are there today, but you know, you can see that they're starting to go up. You know, you see the Great Mall in the background. You can see some of the Lion Living development. So. Every photograph, you know, is a truly a snapshot in time. And so kind of gives us a picture of where we are. And so next slide, please. I think IT is moving this up for me. And this is one slide that we always enjoy seeing. This is. You know, the pre task approval, two thousand and seven. You can see the industrial buildings south of Great Mall Parkway. The mall is there. There is no BART station in this picture. A lot of the industrial, which is done in the Piper neighborhood now is not there in the Piper neighborhood. Now there's. Almost a complete rebuild of the Piper neighborhood, just the one Berry Swenson Tower is not constructed. These pictures also show what is annexed or to be annexed to the metro plan. This shows an area slightly larger than the original task because it adds. Some of those housing sites over along Main Street, which have been to this point inside the Main Street plan. And I think Jay's can talk a little bit more about that and the. The change of the plan boundaries for the for the Main Street plan. And then that part on the east side, the right hand side of the picture. Where we have public storage and some industrial properties. That is the Innovation District that. Was shown in the general plan and is being incorporated into the metro plan. Because of its proximity to the to the transit station and the housing that's being developed here. And I think that's an important part of this whole plan. It's not just that it's. Development that is close to transit. We've got the two light rail stations. We've got the BART station now. That's open, even though it's still lightly used because of our COVID situation. But it is transformative and it is was the basis of the plan in two thousand and eight, you know. Knowing that it was coming. And so, you know, a lot of housing was built because housing is always in need in the valley. But there wasn't much done in the way of the commercial. Because many times commercial will not come until the other. Pieces of infrastructure are there. And now that the BART station is there, we're really counting on. Coming back and getting a lot of that commercial and employment sector. Into the plan. And that's a big part of what this metro update is about. It is trying to finish out the housing pieces. And you can see. In the right hand side picture, there are still some industrial properties there. The mall is still in its current configuration. So there is some housing yet to be built. We are facing. Requirement for more housing from the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And so, you know, with another probably sixty seven hundred units that are going to be required at Milpitas. We hope to find a lot of that space within. The metro area rather than other parts of the city, which has a lot of single family residential in it. So this is really kind of our opportunity area. And, you know, the combination of the BART station, the light rail. The close proximity of services and housing and jobs altogether makes us a really great place. For us to focus a lot of the development that will be coming into the city. So the next slide, please. And as we talk about, you know, what we are doing with the development, you know, this this is a watershed. Of the area. And you can see within the circle there, the very top of that circle, you can see in the black dot is the light rail station. Sort of halfway hidden behind the red. Line of the circle there is the BART station as well, the transit center. And you can see what happens. Once we add the infrastructure of of that bridge across the creek. At the extension of South Milpitas Boulevard. We suddenly bring all of that area that is in the Tarab and Sango Courts, which we call the Tango Area. Are brought in close proximity to not just the transit station, but to the jobs that we anticipate. To be in that Innovation District. And let me say here at this point that at any point that Ned and Alex may want to jump in and add to this. They're certainly welcome and they just need to interrupt me and I'll stop talking and let them jump. Anyway, so this is important because it does show. That we increase, you know, the walkability of the whole area just by some of the infrastructure that we do. As you all know, we put in the pedestrian bridge across Montague Expressway from the. The Transit Center parking garage over to the Piper neighborhood. There's another one of those to come in across. The more southerly part of the Montague Expressway that will tie some of that residential back in closer to. The transit station, transit center. And probably a little bit more walkable way to get to the transit center. And again, to be able to get to the jobs. Because that is one of the key pieces of this plan is to not just, as I said, not just tie into transit. To make everything closer together, the the pathways that can lead you. To the services, to the parks, to jobs, to transit. Shopping, all those things are to be tied together. In a much better way as we build out this plan along with the infrastructure. Next slide, please.
And Mr. Riley, so while you you mentioned earlier, we also have for this evening, we also have an Economic Development Director, Alex. Alex Andrade, as well as the housing manager, Adam Marcus with us this evening as well. So anytime we we may have a question, these two gentlemen from staff also are available. Thank you.
Right. So thank you, Chair Tao. And so again, they can jump in anytime or they can certainly be available for questions at the end. This slide just sort of gives us an idea of some of the stuff that's that's going in out there or is already in. You know, we've got our Trader Joe's in. We've got the the hotel and residential part of Lion Living's project on the. Great Mall Parkway that is just about to begin construction, I think. And so, you know, there's a lot of stuff going in out there. And what's important to recognize. Is that much of the early residential development that came in was town home. Level development. And now we're seeing with the entitlements we have a lot more of the higher density. Residential. So the original past plan had seventy one hundred and a few housing units in it. They've been entitled over sixty nine hundred housing units. So the residential part of this is. Basically built out, but as I said, there's another obligation from. The Reno cycle that says we need to add a lot more housing units. To this city as part of the whole of the valley and the Bay Area. So we're looking for this area to to provide some of that. So we will be adding housing units to the metro plan. Next slide, please.
Oh, Kevin, could I just add really quickly before we leave this slide? You know, the I like to say sometimes that the transit area is in its teenage phase, so it's not. It's not fully developed yet, but there's a lot there. And I particularly like the slide that's on the upper left corner, the large the largest rectangle here on the side with the the brown and the his retail. If I'm reading that correctly, I believe that's the it's on Bond Street. It it's built and it's part of what's called the Eleanor Development. If you're ever down on Montague and you turn off and go. In in to the interior and there's still a lot of construction going on. You will see this and it looks just like the picture and it it's actually very exciting. It's it's not right on one of the main streets, so it's a little bit hidden. But to me, it gives you driving up that street, it gives you a flavor of really what we're trying to achieve. In the metro area because it's that nice mixed use. Development where you have pretty nice, you know, very nice residential units above. And of course. Many of the retail spaces are not full yet. And so, you know, we're waiting, as Kevin said, we're waiting for the market to catch up. To what has been built. So the residential has come first and then as those rooftops, as they like to be called. Fill up and have consumers in them, then usually the retail will follow. Now we have this kind of anomaly at the moment where we're in the middle of the pandemic. And so. Retail is a little bit in flux and, you know, our Economic Development Director could probably speak more about that, but. I just, there there are certain areas of the. I guess my main point, there's certain areas of the metro area that are coming together quite nicely. And I think that over the next few years, we'll see that more and more as these projects are completed and the residential begins to fill up. My other favorite place, of course, is over by the the BART station and the BART garage. And we have the. The new pedestrian bridge that is there and you you get to see some of the public infrastructure that is being paid for by the fees. Generate generated by this new development and. You know, it this is one of those areas where we as planners and you as planning commissioners have to be a little bit visionary. To see past the teenage stage, kind of like with our own children. Well, we we want them to become productive adults. Well. We also want the metro area to become a productive adult and that's what we're working toward with all each each new project gets us a little bit closer.
Thanks, Ned. I think that teenage analogy is pretty good, although I think my teenagers were a little more unruly than this area is. You know, I I think to Ned's point, you know, the. It's important to think about these developments in terms of. What has to come first, you know, residential is really critical to make a lot of the rest of it work. You can look at the commercial side of it, the employment side of it. And, you know, things like the Innovation District are really helpful, but. Much of that would not happen without the BART coming in because. BART is transformational and it is what many of the commercial developers wait for. Is a way to move around. You know, if you go up the peninsula, you can see what Caltrain has done to many of those communities and. And BART is what is going to be transformational for this area. In terms of a lot of the commercial and the employment uses that will come in. And again, we're able to. To concentrate that in an area around the transit center. And it, you know, in doing so, we tend to. To keep the impacts as much as we can off of the rest of the city. So. You know, it might be a very vibrant and active part of the city, which today has a lot of cut through traffic, but it will be. More of a destination place once we go forward. And as Ned says, you know, your visionary. Perspective on it is what is really important. Next slide, please. And to that vein too, you know, you've got hotels and we we do always promote hotels and Alex will tell you this, but. You know, I don't expect to see much new hotel development. We've got the Marriott out there today. Probably won't see much more hotel development until there is more commercial on the ground. You've seen this this plan before. It's in the presentation we gave you back in April. And for any of the members of the public that want to go back and see that or the commissioners. If you go to milpetesmetro.org, the website for. The Milpitas Metro Plan. You can see that whole presentation from April twenty eighth. And it does include some of these land use. Graphics that talk about what we're doing. And so when we look at this, you know, the existing is kind of showing. What has been done, a lot of the residential and the brown colors. The Innovation District over on the right hand side in gray that has not started anything yet. But you can see that there are plans for it to bring in, you know, some of that commercial industrial space. And we have places to build out, Heret Court and Tango down on the south side. The Main Street parcels over there that are being added to the plan. And then, of course, there's the Great Mall and we spent some time on the Great Mall back in April. About what the potential is. And we know that Simon Group. As much as they are mall owners, they are also developers and. You know, depending upon where we go post COVID and what happens with retail in general. You know, I think they certainly view their ninety nine acres of the Great Mall proper. As potential for something more and and our plan is to try to give them opportunity. It will be up to them as property owners to move things forward, but we want a plan that will. Provide what the city would like to see there. And hopefully that is, you know, in keeping with what Simon would like to see as well. So this plan can be looked at in more detail in the April twenty eighth presentation. Again, which you'll find on the milpetesmetro.org site. Next slide. This is just kind of an aerial view of some of that we talked about. You can see public storage on the far right hand side, which is the new Innovation District being brought in. As that area develops, we would expect. There's probably a connection across from South Milpitas Boulevard, which is at the BART station. And goes directly across the creek, Berryessa Creek there and into that. That new Innovation District neighborhood. The Great Mall, you know, we'll see where we go with that. We know that Simon is interested. We've also got Home Depot there, which I expect will probably stay for some time and it needs its its field of surface parking. So, you know, it will to some degree challenge all the things that can go on in the Great Mall, but. You know, I don't think there's any interest in pushing Home Depot away. It's it's certainly a great contributor to the city. The VTA Bus Depot, we already know that's something that VTA is looking at. Leasing for development and and they have plans for. Residential, trying to meet their obligations and and goals for affordable housing. The district properties. The VTA site itself, the bus area and the vacant piece of that. Triangular piece of that site. Provide opportunities for more development. See the hotel, the Marriott Hotel there in the center of the picture. You know, you can look at that and say, well, you could probably put that many hotel rooms and more. Into a tower or two and still have. You know, a good part of that six and three quarter acres, you know, to do something else with. So there's a lot of potential. Still here. To build out what was left of the trans the task. And with the added pieces we're bringing in to do even more. So, you know, there's a lot of potential for, you know, bringing in those revenues from the commercial side and bringing in the housing. To support that commercial and just to create a nice livable area. Next slide, please. So this is one we showed you before too. This is an overlay of Santana Row. On top of the Great Mall. Remember, the Great Mall proper is about ninety nine acres. I think this whole. Piece, which was the original Ford plant, is about a hundred and fifty acres. And so, you know, you overlay Santana Row on it, whether it's thirty six acres, you can see there. is much potential there. And so depending upon how Simon would go at this, you can see a lot of things happening on that site and the surrounding properties within that Great Mall neighborhood. So that's again, something you can go back and look at in the prior plan that we showed you from April twenty eight on the website. Next slide, please. These are images we've shown you before of what is possible. This is along Great Mall Parkway, you know, the way that you bring retail out, activate the street. You protect bikeways and pedestrian ways as well as, you know, keep the six lanes of traffic, three in each direction here, got the light rail overhead. You know, brings a lot of activity to the street front. You can have residential or office above. So there's a lot we could do here. And, you know, the city, what the city does basically with the plan is create its vision. And then it is up to the individual developers and property owners to come in and try to build along those lines. And we hopefully, you know, get it right and give them what they need, the potential they need to be able to do these things. Next slide. I think next one is another image. And this one is kind of shooting up from Great Mall Parkway into the mall. And it's just more of the same of what is possible there with ground floor retail and residential or commercial above it. Next slide, please. This is looking at all these blue buildings are what the potential are for the Innovation District. And Alex may want to jump in here. In this purple, we also show one of the hotels. Well, again, I think hotel is going to follow some of the other development. It may not be right there. It may be, you know, within the heart of the Innovation District. If we add another hotel at some point, you know, the demand will be greater than what Marriott can probably provide. So, you know, we'd expect to see a hotel developer as some of this begins to build out over the twenty year cycle of it. And again, you can see this straight in connection from the Innovation District into great into the South Milpitas Boulevard roadway and straight to BART. So Alex, you want to jump in? Anything you want to say?
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Chair Tao, Vice Chair Chuan, Planning Commission, Alex Andrade, Director of Economic Development. Thank you for having me. Kevin, thank you so much. It's a wonderful presentation. You have heard Planet Commission Kevin use the word transformative. You've heard Ned talk about exciting in the past. I've heard Ned say, Milpitas, that's where the party is. And if there is one project, if you were to ask me that is incredibly exciting, it is this Milpitas Metro specific plan. For us in the economic development world, we're very excited about the Innovation District where we really are looking to diversify the economy. We're looking to create an environment where we create an opportunity for the city to be financially stable through protecting and preserving employment lands. And there's employment opportunities that will come near the Transit Center. You've heard Kevin talk about the housing that's surrounding the Transit Center. We look to see more housing built, specifically affordable housing. But we're really looking to utilize that transformative multimodal Transit Center as our gateway to North, South and West and create a real special place that allows us to be a major player in Silicon Valley. I'm going to leave it at that. I I'm happy to add more information, but I know Kevin still has quite a bit to go through as it relates to this overall project, but I'm happy to share more details about the Innovation District. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, sure. So, you know, maybe we'll be able to get to some questions that may add to this. So next slide, please. This just, the next slide is just the image, you know, that we've created or consultants have created looking from the Innovation District down toward the BART station. You see the parking garage down there and the BART station itself, Transit Center. And so this is what is possible in this area. And, you know, as as we move through COVID and move beyond it, you know, we think we see an uptick in the economy. And a lot of these properties may be seen as very viable now that there is transit access and that there is a lot of housing nearby and services. So we'll be looking for this to start happening, you know, in the near future. Again, it's a twenty year plan, quite when this happens and who comes in and buys out properties and gets things going, we don't know yet. But we'll see what happens with it. So that's kind of that presentation. Let me just wrap up with sort of where we are. The last slide here. It's just where we're going at this point. The next thing we're doing is the notice of preparation for the EIR. Let me get that next slide, please. And this will be the last slide, I think. We need to circulate the notice of preparation for the EIR. That's a thirty day circulation. We also have a scoping meeting where we talk to the responsible agencies and the public about what the EIR should cover. That said, you know, the EIR is already underway. If we get new information from anyone on what the scope and content that that should be, obviously, we'll need to add that into what we're working on today with the with EIR. We are scheduled to go to the council on October twelve to give them the chapters we've worked on on the metro plan to date. And so want to get input from them for you, for us, for members of the public about what they think is important. Then at some point, we need to circulate the EIR when it is ready. It'll be the draft EIR. It has a forty five day circulation and get comments from that. And we have to then respond to those comments and put them into what is called the final EAR. So it is the draft EAR plus all the comments and responses and that creates the final EAR. And that, along with the plan, then comes here to the Planning Commission for your recommendation to the council. Another opportunity for the public to weigh in. And then it moves on to the City Council with the final EAR for adoption with the plan. They need to certify that EAR before they can adopt the metro plan. And at that point, which we hope is is by December or so, and we're on a tight timeframe now. So we need to work hard to get there. And then, once we do that, we've got to go back and look at the fees and the fees basically cover the infrastructure and that would be any of the new bridges we need, any facilities, whether it's water service. We know we've got some water service obligations out there, some infrastructure we need to build. We'll try to improve the the circulation system and the sidewalks and the creek trails and other trails, that sort of thing. So what we do is go back and take a look at the development that is yet to come. We have to assess what those public infrastructure improvements will cost us. And then we try to create a relationship between the development of those projects and the payment of the improvement. So that that's a follow up to the adoption of the plan. That basically gets us to the implementation of the metro plan. So I'll leave it at that and open it to questions or anything that Ned and Alex, anyone, anyone else wants to add at this point. Oh, Chair, your your mic is off.
Sorry about that. So, thank you, Mr. Riley. And and so for staff, we have a Director Thomas, Director Andrade, and also the Housing Manager, Mr. Marcus here this evening answer questions. So are we just kind of doing a sort of an interactive sort of Q and A session? At this point, Director Thomas?
Yes, this is more of an informational item and I just thought it would be good to check in with the commission. You know, in a few months, we'll be back before you with the full plan, but we hadn't talked about this particular thing, item for a while. So you can see where we are. We're right in the thick of things, really writing the actual plan and then preparing, having our consultants prepare the environmental impact report. But anything you see that you that concern, that you like, that concerns you, that you find interesting? You know, it it's not necessarily anything brand new for the city. We're really just updating the existing plan. But I I think there are some new components. Certainly, the Innovation District is new. And as Kevin pointed out, that was, we laid the groundwork for that in the new general plan. And now we're building upon that. And then certainly the work that we do and it remains to be seen what will happen with the Great Mall site. Of course, the city will need to partner with the owner of that site, Simon Properties. But around the perimeter of the Great Mall, there are a number of sites. And one of the slides you saw that the VTA actually owns what the where the old, the former bus station was, you know, ripe for development, redevelopment. So there's some areas in there. We've we've tried to be very thoughtful, working between planning and economic development and with the consultants to put together a plan that we think kind of will point us in a, in a you know, keep the momentum going in the in the transit area.
Yeah, Ned, can I add a couple more things?
Yes.
Chair Tao. Process wise, as Ned said, you know, the Innovation District, and I said earlier, I think Innovation District was part of the general plan. And process wise, just remember that this plan is not unlike the general plan. In fact, the general plan defers to this plan and to the the Main Street Gateway Plan, you know, to do the actual planning of what will come in those. So this is, in fact, kind of a extension of the general plan process. So, you know, while we we're not really presenting anything new for you at this point, other than where where we're going. You know, a lot of what we've talked about is already came out of the April twenty eighth. And as Ned said, you know, we're working on writing the plan today. So, you know, if there's anything else that you've thought of that you want to add and, you know, give us some thoughts on, great, we'd love to hear it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Riley. And so for both Mr. Riley and the Director Thomas, the Planning Commission believed last year had a had some, had erected a subcommittee for the for the metro plan. And at what point, you know, are are we going to have the subcommittee members be interjected into the process so that, you know, that the in input and and the output can be more organic process and during the this planning stages?
I think the thought was, given the where we are with the plan today, you know, as we continue to write the plan and the EIR, we we could seek to get some additional input from the subcommittee prior to bringing the full plan back to the Planning Commission. So soon as we have something ready to go, then we can set up those meetings and those conversations.
Okay. And another question here is with regards to the Reno numbers that that has been sort of given, given to the city and also the, you know, additional pieces of legislation such as SB three thirty. It provides a lot of dynamic sort of a shifting and that the product types that that will be bringing on. How how the staff see the interplay of the of the two?
I think that's a really good question. Milpitas is in a much better situation situation than a lot of cities in that we do have the possibility of future housing sites. And one of the important components of the housing element of the general plan, which is also being updated, is that we we do a sites inventory and and every city in California does this at one point or time or another. And we have to identify actual sites where the we, well, we we receive the numbers from the state. So we know how many housing is. And then we have to go out and, you know, look around the city and say, well, here, here are the areas where these housing units will go. Milpitas has both the transit area, the metro area as well as the Main Street area, and then a few smaller areas identified in the general general plan as opportunity sites where housing can go. And those by and large will be our, you know, the sites that we identify for housing. It'll it'll be challenging, you know, that's we at every, every city across the state is grappling with this issue. But again, Milpitas is a little bit better circumstance because we do have great, you know, at least we have potential sites for that housing to go. And Adam is working with our Principal Hunter J. Lee on that project. We're in the process of lining up a consultant to help us with the update of the housing element. And it's it's a little bit of a heavy list. There's a lot of analysis that goes into that much more than you would think. And we're looking at census data and, you know, what is the household size? What are the household incomes? Well, and and again, the the basis to that is finding where the housing will go. And then we also have to look at issues of equity and fair housing. And so there's, it's it's quite a process that we'll be going through over the next few years. I don't Adam, unless there's anything additional that you'd like to add to that in relation to our Reno numbers and what we're doing there.
Oh, thanks, Ned. I was just going to add that with the sites inventory, there's, there's been changes with this housing element cycle to where we really have to show the state that the sites that we pick are actually viable sites that really could be developed. So that's to Ned's point about needing a lot of analysis on a kind of a site by site basis. We have to go much more in detail. In some extent, the economic feasibility and likelihood. Can you hear me?
Froze a little bit.
In and out.
I'm sorry.
You're in the mid, you're intermittent frozen.
Okay, can you hear me okay now? Or do I need to refresh my connection here?
You are okay at the moment.
All right, I'll I'll talk fast. How about that? I was just saying that when with the sites inventory, it's a little bit different this time around. We have to look at the actual feasibility that a project could really happen in the next years, what's on the site, what's around it and how likely it is that the land would would get developed. So just kind of reinforcing Ned's point that there's a lot more detail that the state's requiring than they used to.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. And another question here is that, you know, we have traditional a task for metro fees that's assessed based on the on the commercial as well as the residential. So on the resi side is about thirty thousand, thirty four ish thousand number. So Director Thomas, Mr. Riley, can you kind of speak to the the new look? What what are we expecting the fees direction to go?
Well, let me jump, Ned, and then you can you can correct me or or add into it. You know, it's kind of hard to say because we don't know that there's going to be a lot more cost in the basic infrastructure plan. There will be some additions done, you know, if we run a bridge across Berriessa Creek. Some of the other things that will happen, there will be some increased costs. But, you know, if we if we're able to bring another, you know, six to seven thousand housing units to the plan and we're able to develop a lot of that office commercial space that we tried to get before but couldn't because there was no BART station. You know, if a lot of that comes online, there will be, you know, a lot of development that will be able to pay fees. So I mean, I could even see it's possible fees could not go up anymore. They might even go down. Who knows? I don't want to make that prediction. But it is possible that if we have a robust development plan and not a lot more infrastructure to go on the books, that it could be, you know, very favorable look in terms of the development fee scope that we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, and I would just add to that. It's really, so as Kevin just described, ratios are, it's really the the relationship between how many units and how much additional development you actually get compared with how much infrastructure, new infrastructure you want to build. And if the, as Kevin indicated, you know, if you, if we put a whole bunch of bells and whistles in the plan and have a whole bunch of interesting public infrastructure that we need to build and in in particular in past years. And we're trying to address this in the plan. If we have to buy additional parkland, well, land is really expensive right now. So the the costs go way up. And then that has to be divided among the the units or the new development that is built. So that's, I think, once the plan is kind of gelled and we know how the 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 projected capacity that we'll have for new development and and we've identified what new infrastructure we might need, then then we'll have a better idea. Personally, I I'll throw this in there. I would really, one of the things I would really like to see, I I think would be a great feature of the of this plan that's not there currently is another pedestrian bridge that would cross over from the McCandless neighborhood where McCandless Park is going to go over those railroad tracks to the Main Street area. Now, it it's tricky because you know, when you build pedestrian bridges or if it's underpass or it's very expensive and you need lots of land. And so it may not be feasible. and you need lots, lots of land, and so it may not be feasible. So that's just one example of the things we have to weigh. If it's not feasible, then we'll scrap it. And then we don't have that extra cost for that infrastructure. But if we do add it in, then there's an extra cost, but then we have to weigh, well, how then do we increase? Are we able to have higher density on that side of Main Street, for example, because then they have access across? So there's, there's a lot of, I guess the point I'm trying to make is there's a lot of give and take and consideration that goes into that. You know, yin and the yang of you, number of units and then capacity of development versus the infrastructure that's needed to support it. And the other thing I'll say is that we've tried to take a very creative approach to open space. Not, not only because it's expensive to buy the land and then build a park, but in a highly urbanized area like the metro is becoming or will become. You know, we don't necessarily envision having large playfields like you would in a traditional neighborhood or other parts of the city. And so we, you know, we've, and, and then you'll end up having open space for people that might be private, privately funded open space on the top of the building. You know, we've seen a lot of very nice rooftop gardens built. And so as, you know, you start shifting some of the costs around because those costs are borne by the developer. And then maybe if they build that, they get a break on their fees. And so there's a lot of different ways of structuring this. And it, it's kind of like, it's literally putting a big financial puzzle together. Land use puzzle as well as the finance, how does the, how do the finances work?
Thank you, Director and Commissioners, since this is sort of an organic process here. Anyone with questions, you know, if you just will pipe up in the, I won't go, I won't go down the line and calling Commissioners for questions. But if we just pipe up and ask, this is the time. Anyone like to jump in? Just hearing none. So Director Thomas, would you like to move on to the next item? Or we, we have other items we want to continue discussing on this particular agenda item?
No, that's fine. If we want to, to move on to the next item. I can do a quick introduction and then we can move on to that. I, I would be curious. So was there anything in particular that any of the Commissioners saw within the metro plan? You know, are, are we, are we getting it right? This, the, the, the area around the bar station has transformed dramatically, just on the pictures over the past 10 years. And for those of you who have lived in Milpitas during that time, certainly, you know, it's, it's very different down there. It's almost like new Milpitas versus traditional Milpitas. And I don't know, is that something that you support or that you think is a good thing for Milpitas or, you know?
What kind of pop in here? I love what we've done near the Bart Station. It's no, everyone knows that California has a crazy housing shortage right now. And so just the amount of units we're able to pack in by building up and in that area focusing on the dense housing over like single family homes. I think Milpitas will always have single family homes. I don't see Milpitas ever moving in the direction of banning the single family home zoning like some other cities have been doing. But I think, you know, like focusing certain areas and, and, you know, packing in as many units as we can is, we're, we're really doing our part for the housing shortage. And I think even going above and beyond. And you know, there's, oh, I'm going to mispronounce the name of the street, San, San Tago Court. That area, there's that new housing development that was just approved. And I, so I've been in Milpitas for 26 years. I'm 26 years old. So, you know, it's, Milpitas is kind of my, my life, my home. And so I've, I've seen it change. You know, I remember when, I remember when the area around Safeway was a lot of dirt. And so I've seen this area change and I think it's just, it's just incredible. And some of the renderings that we are shown in this presentation of what it's going to look like is gonna be like pretty cool. I noticed with the Lions Living, one of them needs to be updated because they came back and got reapproval on a different set of plans. I was gonna, I was gonna poke fun at that, but I decided to let you talk. But no, it's, I, I think what we're, we're not just doing our part to, you know, contribute homes to the housing, you know, to the housing supply of California, but we're doing it in a cool way. Where we're doing it in a way that looks nice. It like, it looks nice, it's functional and it's fun. And it's, it's a place that people would actually be proud to live in. And, you know, I, I feel like I'm on the Planning Commission at the greatest time in Milpitas history to be on the Planning Commission because we're just seeing such changes and we're overcoming such big issues. And, you know, even the, this is not as much to do with the Planning Commission, but the Planning Department and, and building encouraging new landscaping that's more water efficient to help combat the drought in California. I just, I think this is one of the coolest times to be on the Planning Commission because we get to see reports like this and we get to kind of get a sneak peek of what the city that we all live in and we all call home is, is going to be like in the, in the next five to 10 years. So just comments, no questions, but I'm just, I'm excited to see where we go from here.
Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn. Any other Commissioners with comments? Please do pipe up.
I think the Vice Chair has a comment.
Yes, Vice Chair, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, thank the presenter, a very good presentation. You know, it's exciting to, you know, see the direction that we're going. So that's my only comment. Just wanted to thank the presenter.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other?
Eric, can I say something too?
Please, Commissioner Albana, please.
Thank you. And also, thank you, Mr. Riley and, and Director Thomas. I'm so excited, just like what Commissioner Alcorn had said. This is really something that in this generation, we can do an input. So I am honored and of course, it is exciting. The pictures that you showed, I had a quick question. Do the public have access to those renderings, those nice photographs? It's very inspiring of what the city is turning into.
But those are on the, the website for the Milpitas Metro.
It's in the website, right?
Right. So they can look at the presentations and see.
Yeah. So I think I'm going to be a cheerleader to all talk to the residents of Milpitas, to get involved. You know, to, to attend meetings, even with the council meetings and then to see what Milpitas is transforming into. So I think I'm, I will be doing that as a, you know, as a word by spreading it around. So thank you. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana. And any last comments from Commissioners? Okay, I guess I'm hearing that. And one last item from the chair, you know, I think, you know, we, we are redeveloping the areas. And also I think with the redevelopment and also the continuing sort of updating of, of an area. You know, like to really, you know, be able to, would encourage, we have some sort of visual, visuals or kind of a there, there sort of a point where we can all, you know, either have a visual striking, visually striking, you know, building, you know, element, something that which, you know, we can just say it's there, there. And, you know, as a reference point, I think we, we have, you know, right now that, that the visual line is very horizontal, you know, with a certain degree of verticality to it. But if we can have something that which has sort of representation of a spirit or a, you know, visual representation of the community, that will be wonderfully to, wonderful to, to have incorporated into this going forward process. Thank you. Okay. And seeing there's no other comments here, and I'd like to thank Mr. Riley for, for, for the presentation this evening. And we, we look forward to have your good work going forward, completed in the, in due time. Thank you.
My pleasure and thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to the next, the new business item, this is receive a status update presentation on Milpitas Gateway, Main Street, specific plan, the Midtown update. So Director Thomas.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So we, we have our Principal Planner Jay Lee here to give this presentation. And I, I want to thank Kevin for the excellent presentation on the metro plan. And, you know, I, I've been thinking about, Commissioner Alcorn said, it's really true. These specific plans are very interesting because they are sort of the intersection of all the issues that we, in planning. You've got land use and transportation and housing and affordable housing and urban design. And so all of that comes together in these specific plans. And I, I was, I was glad for, for Commissioner Alcorn's comment as well. Because I, my, my intent for tonight was to sort of give the Planning Commission another perspective on your role as Planning Commissioners. You know, we, we come together every other week and we have individual projects and those are the building blocks of the city. But from time to time, it's really good for us to step back and to kind of see the big picture. And that these, certainly the general plan was that, you know, the, covering the entire community. But these specific plans are looking at these other two areas, you know, specific areas of the city where most of the growth is currently occurring. And so while we're winding down and, and we'll soon have a draft specific plan for you in the metro area, where at the other end of the process with the gate, what's now known the Gateway Main Street Plan, Jay Lee will be our project manager on that. And, and this of course is an update to the metro plan. It was very similar to what you just saw. We're just at a different stage in, in the process. So the metro plan was adopted more than a decade ago. And it, it, you know, we haven't really seen the results on Main Street that we had hoped to see with that plan. There even today, it, it looks much the same as it did probably when the plan was adopted. There's just a tremendous amount of development and redevelopment possibilities on Main Street. And then the, the Gateway Plan also includes the Calaveras Corridor coming from the 880 across to Main Street as well. So Jay is working on that as well as a number of other interrelated project. He, he's going to talk about, you know, where we're going with the, the Gateway Plan. And then some of these other projects related to local transit as well as the housing element that we, we talked about just a moment ago and a couple of other things. So I'll turn it over to Jay. And again, keep, keep in mind that that we're, I guess, one of the reasons where I wanted to have this information presented to the Planning Commission is that as, you know, as we go forward and we have individual projects come to you. Sometimes we get mired in the details of, well, how, how many parking spaces are there? And what the setback is five feet when it's supposed to be 10 feet. We get right down into the nitty gritty. But I think it's also important for us to take this larger view as well. So without any other delay, I'll turn the time over to Jay for his presentation and look forward to your comments on it as well.
Good evening Commissioners. As Ned mentioned, I'm here to provide an update on the Gateway, Main Street specific plan. But also some of our other ongoing planning policy projects. As Commissioner Alcorn mentioned, it is an exciting time for Milpitas. So I'm excited to share about all the things that we're working on. And I think Ned set the stage really well for how this is a, a great day, a great night where we can really kind of take a step back and look at the big picture and hopefully it's helpful and informative, informative, informative moving forward as you review development projects. Next slide, please. So I'll start by going over some of our major land use plans. Of course, the Milpitas Gateway Main Street Specific Plan, also the Housing Element Update and the Associated Housing Opportunity Zones. Then I'll provide an update on a couple of projects related to development streamlining, the objective design standards for mixed use and residential development, and also the Development Handbook and ADU Toolkit. And I'll finish by talking about some of our other efforts related, related to planning, including Milpitas On Demand, the Vehicle Miles Travel Policy and the Smoke Free Ordinance. Next slide. All right. So for the first, the major land use plans, and I'll start with the Gateway Main Street Specific Plan. Next slide, please. So as you can see from this graphic, the Midtown Specific Plan, which is currently the specific, the specific plan for the Midtown area is in need of an update. It was originally adopted in 2002, so it's been a while. But now with the update to the plan, we've decided on a new name that better, better reflects the new focus, which will be on Main Street and also its role as a gateway to the city. Next slide, please. Director Thomas went a little bit into the development that's happened since the original Midtown Specific Plan. But a little bit more specifically, redevelopment has been concentrated in the southern end, definitely closer to the Transit Area Specific Plan and the Bart Station to the south. But the plan's vision has not been fully realized and much of the, much of the development potential remains, especially further north. Next slide, please. While Midtown is the city's historic commercial and industrial core, the area is undergoing a transformation into a mixed use neighborhood. So the Gateway Specific Plan will focus on three new areas. First, Main Street, which we are hoping transforms into a mixed use corridor and a complete street. Second, the Calaveras Boulevard area with a focus on revitalizing Sarah Center into a gateway to the city. Lastly, we have the Abbott Avenue and I-880 Freeway area, which we are hoping to redevelop into more of an employment area. Next slide, please. A, a major goal of the specific plan update is to facilitate mixed use and transit oriented development. We anticipate adding about 1,500 to 2,000 dwelling units in this area. As we, as we discussed earlier, this will help with our Rena allocation to help meet that number. However, we want to do this in a way that supports and retains local businesses and also enhances the existing character. We want, we want Midtown to be a great complement to the metro plan area. It is a different area, but we do see it as also a really important area where development can happen on a bit of a different scale. And also another, of course, another goal is to enhance the connections by reimagining Main Street, Abel Street and Calaveras Boulevard into complete streets, connecting Thompson Court and Abbott Avenue or any other missing connections. And also by improving connections to Calaveras Boulevard to better connect Midtown to the, to, to the rest of the city. Next slide, please.
Jay, before you move on, I'll, sorry, can we go back to the other slide? I just want to point out the picture on the bottom of courses, the northern end of Main Street with the, the library and the medical facility across the street. And there's some excellent historic preservation that's done here with the grammar school and, and some history, the historic De Rees home. And, but you see in this picture, sort of what we're talking about, we talk about complete streets. You've got very wide sidewalks. Well, we call them pedestrians scale lighting. You've got decorative lighting. There's some landscaping in the median and on the side. For those of you who were on the Planning Commission at the time, about a year, maybe 18 months ago, there was a very nice, interesting mixed use project that came forward at the site on the right side where that wooden fence is. And they're, they're working through some lot line adjustment issues. And I'm, I'm hoping to see that project go forward. It had a little commercial area on the ground floor and I think five or six units above and very interesting, you know, visually interesting design that would fill in that corner right next to the library. But as we walk around Main Street and we talk about the, you know, south of here on the, below the, the, the bridge for, for Calaveras. You know, if some of these streetscape improvements are kind of what we would like to see on the southern end as well. It won't look exactly like this, but this, this particular area of the city is very, very well done. And we would hope to see more of that same type of, you know, of course, these are institutional buildings. But further south, we would see some of more like we see up above with some residential over ground floor commercial. So that just visualizing what that might look like. Yes.
Through the chair, my apologies. That, that project you talked about, it's already built, correct?
Not yet.
What was the one that we approved, I think about a year and a half ago or maybe two years ago? That was, we, we had to do an amendment for the setback because it's right up against the sidewalk and it's all first floor retail and, and there's a few units above it. It's currently built.
Oh, is that, yeah, this one on this particular site isn't built yet. The other one may be further south on Main Street. There was, there is a very nice one that's built there that has ground floor retail. There was, there is a very nice one that's built there that has ground floor retail.
Yeah, yeah.
Four units and then
It hasn't been, it hasn't been leased up yet um, with any retailer or, but it is a beautiful project.
Yeah, it turned out nicely.
My apologies, uh, carry on.
Go ahead, Jay, sorry.
No worries, um, but that's exactly the type of development we want to see um, consistently throughout Main Street. And other goals include, uh, of course, providing open space, uh, open spaces that are accessible. And also establishing a uniquely Milpitas identity through vibrant, high quality public spaces. And by celebrating Milpitas' history and culture. Excellent. So this timeline shows um, provides an overview of the work completed and the upcoming work. Uh, we held a series, uh, we actually held a series of three community conversations on revitalizing Main Street. The first one was focused on business, the second on housing and the last one on history and culture. Uh, it was, um, it was a great series. We received a lot of great community input and we are currently preparing a report which will help shape the plan's vision and goals. And following the community conversations, uh, which happened from April to June. Uh, in July, we selected a consultant for the gateway plan. And we are currently um, working through on executing uh, the contracts. And we're, we are hoping to kick off the gateway specific plan uh, next month or potentially October of this year. And once we start the plan, of course, as with many other, many long range planning efforts, we'll start by uh, focusing on visioning and community outreach. I won't go into detail, but you know, we will have a community outreach plan. It'll be robust, we'll come back to this commission. You know, it will do a lot of different things, a lot of different uh, methods to really get community input. But the, the, the great thing about the community outreach is that it will coincide with two upcoming events uh, related to this effort. So I want to mention briefly the Better Block Event, which will happen in the first weekend of November. Uh, based on community input, the city will be implementing a temporary two day installation along Main Street that will feature programming such as art, music, games, pop up shops and public spaces. And another event, the holiday, holiday magic event in December. Uh, staff or the city will set up an ice rink, provide entertainment and put up Christmas lights along Main Street to celebrate the holiday season. So we really do think that these events will um, give you a sneak peek of what Main Street could become in the future as we reimagine um, the street.
And I'm sorry, Jay, if I may just uh, as quick question in terms of funding process for these uh, events, um, it's already in, in place, locked in?
Um, I don't know Ned, if you could add to maybe um, those events and the funding behind it?
Or the, the Better Block and the other, and the holiday event? Yes, uh, the uh, and if, as Alex, if Alex is still here, uh, the Better Block Event is being organized through economic development and the, the dates are set and we're working with a nonprofit organization called Better Block to put that together. And it, it, it's actually going to be a very interesting event uh, over a, a couple of days where we um, really activator and live in a, a section of uh, Main Street and it will be right around the, the corner where um, Sarah uh, intersects with Main Street and there's a, a number of very interesting events and, and art installations, et cetera, planned for that. Um, a portion of those funds are coming from the ARPA funds, I believe. And, and we are, uh, and then for the um, holiday event, Recreation Services and other uh, departments of city, city manager's office are working on putting that together. Uh, the council's talked about it a couple of different times in their meeting and uh, again, holiday event, it'll be up toward the library, uh, the northern end of uh, Main Street. There's a, I think the main event will be a um, an ice skating rink that's being brought in and some uh, music and, and art installations there too. So uh, all of these are sort of temporary events, but it's, they're available to us and for the planning department to do some uh, as Jay mentioned, community engagement efforts. Uh, but it's also, uh, you know, in my mind, I think the purpose, one of the purposes behind it is to attract residents and visitors down to Main Street and give them a flavor of what could be down there. Again, we're putting on our visionary hats here and um, uh, not, not just in, in planning and, and showing some pretty pictures, but actually I, I think you could call it uh, interactive um, planning where people come down and they experience an area that maybe they wouldn't have gone to, but we're giving them a reason to go down there and then um, to kind of celebrate Main Street. And uh, that, that's certainly one of the um, purposes behind the Better Block Movement. They've done those types of events all over the, the country and we're, we're very pleased to have them come. We, we were actually planning to do the Better Block Event before the pandemic hit and then it uh, for obvious reasons, you know, it kind of fizzled, so we're, we're glad to be able to bring that back in early November.
Thank you, Director Thomas, apologies on the, on the uh, on the side discussion, thank you.
Oh, no, I, I was thrown a little bit because for some reason I was leaning, I, I've got my earphones on and I, I, I wasn't hearing Jay at all and I thought we had lost his audio, but it was actually, you know, uh, user error on my part because I had, I was unfortunately pushing on the uh, mute button on my headphones, so I didn't hear uh, some of that until the very, good, good thing I turned it back on before you called my name.
Overlooked, thank you.
Alright, so following um, the outreach which will continue into next year. Uh, you know, our consultant and, and city staff will, will work together on the draft plan. Uh, there will be several drafts, you know, as we continue to do outreach and continue to refine the plan. And in the, and um, and meanwhile, we will also be, of course, as required, be conducting the sequel analysis. So all of that will, you know, take a lot of the next year and we are hoping to complete the gateway plan in um, the latter part of next year or potentially uh, early twenty twenty-three.
And I'll just throw there that, that the consultant uh, team that we uh, will have selected, uh, there, it's called Ascent Environmental. They're actually helping the city now, we're working with them already, um, through the Public Works Department on our climate action plan. So they're very familiar with the city and I, I know there was an earlier comment about uh, the water, uh, you know, water smart plants and that sort of thing. So it, that's one particular area of strength for Ascent Environmental. So as we develop this plan, we hope to incorporate some of those principles of sustainability and and climate, climate adaptation into not only the buildings, but also the public infrastructure that will be built.
Alright, thank you, Ned. Uh, next slide, please. Alright, so we talked about this a little bit earlier, but we are the planning department. We are also supporting the Building Safety and Housing Department in updating the city's housing element, which is of course, one of the required general plan, uh, required elements of the general plan. The housing element has to be updated every, um, every eight years uh, to demonstrate that the city can meet its uh, regional housing needs allocation, which is the number of units that the city is required to plan for and permit during the next eight year cycle, which is twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Um, all to fulfill its share of the regional housing need. And you can see our read on numbers uh, for the upcoming cycle. Um, since we talked about it, now we have the numbers in front of us, uh, so you can take a look at that. There are allocations for each income level, um, and also a total allocation. The main goal is of the housing element update is the plan for housing at all income levels through goals, policies and programs. And as we mentioned, uh, the housing sites inventory will be a key component of this. Also, uh, the Fair Housing Act, um, which requires that the uh, housing element update um, provide sites in the, in a manner that is um, that promotes equality and that's available for all. And just to give you a little bit of a um, I guess, uh, insight into how we're doing with our current cycle. Uh, we have already exceeded the market rate allocation, but uh, we have not met uh, the below market rate allocation, the affordable housing units, which of course is typically harder to meet, um, especially the, the lower income levels. So um, the housing element update, you know, this is something we hope to address, uh, but also other projects that we have um, on the way. So next slide, please.
And could I interject here too? I was, this is just a general announcement and Adam, you can help me remember, is it next Monday, the thirtieth? When we're, there's a conversation that's being hosted regionally, but then there will be breakout groups uh, specifically around the housing element. I don't know if there's any, uh, this might be a good time just to kind of make that general announcement, Adam, if you want to. Sorry, sorry, Lee or Jay, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, thank you, Ned. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll post a, a registration link in the chat. Um, but it is a great opportunity to learn about the housing element and to get involved, you don't have to know anything about housing and development, it's for everyone. So um, it's, yeah, it's at six o'clock on Monday, Monday evening and I'll, I'll post the link in the chat. We'll have uh, Spanish and Vietnamese translation available as well.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Ned and Adam. Um, yeah, so hopefully um, anybody, everybody can join that, but uh, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, uh, because we've been struggling a little bit to meet our affordable housing allocation. Um, you know, we, we, we receive grant funding for this project as well. Um, but you know, another project on the horizon is the Housing Opportunity Zones. Uh, which we will, which will happen concurrently with the Housing Element Update. And uh, one of the main goal is to incentivize affordable housing development in key areas through overlay zoning districts, which will allow Milpitas um, to establish special zoning requirements in certain areas to facilitate affordable housing in particular. The Opportunity Zones will allow for buy right housing uh, in designated areas for projects that meet objective standards per state law. So this is the general direction that state law is going. And we will do this, um, in addition to buy right housing, which will make it easier for developers um, to, to build housing. Uh, the city will consider a suite of tools to incentivize affordable housing in particular. Namely, uh, uh, the supplemental density bonus, uh, beyond the state density bonus, the uh, sequoia streamlining, uh, potential uh, relaxed development standards and possibly financial incentives. But these are things that we will consider and of course have to vet. Next slide, please. So as we update the housing element and implement these housing opportunity zones, we will prioritize housing in our two specific plan areas, of course, and also areas designated for mixed use development, uh, which are well served by transit and other amenities. So as we mentioned earlier, um, you know, we, we do want to facilitate development um, to help address the housing crisis, but at the same time, doing it in a manner that is efficient, but also sustainable. And we really believe that, you know, the way to do that is to locate it in areas that you know, have the right amenities, that have access to transit, you know, that can handle the, the additional growth. Next slide, please. So for the next steps, uh, we are, you know, in the process of executing a contract with a consultant with the scope of work and the budget. And we will start community outreach soon, which will also continue into next year. And all with the hopes of meeting the state deadline of, of January twenty twenty-three. Alright, so next slide. So those are our major land use plans um, going on. But I also want to highlight two projects related to development streamlining. And the first one is the Objective Design Standards. And then in addition to zoning codes, general plans and specific plans, cities also have design guidelines, uh, which you might be famo- familiar with in Milpitas, we have them in our specific plan areas. Uh, but these design guidelines are to ensure that developers utilize best practices in design and architecture. However, as you may all know, uh, they are often subjective and challenging to implement. So recent state law uh, requires objective, objective design standards for all multifamily residential projects. Next slide, please. So what are objective standards? According to the state, they are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official. Next slide, please. So to comply with state law and also streamline the development review process, we hired Raimi and Associates to prepare the design standards and kicked off this effort at the start of the year. So far, we've conducted outreach to development review staff and developers and conducted technical analysis of existing con- uh, the existing context and best practices. We are currently working on a draft and will, will return for feedback later this year and are hoping to complete the project by the end of the year or early next year. So as you can see on this slide, uh, we will be taking a holistic approach uh, to provide standards at different scales to address concerns at all levels of development. All the way from site planning at the largest scale and all the way down to architectural detailing. So we really um, hope that these objective design standards will clarify what this, what we as a city want in terms of the design of these buildings to make sure that we not only, you know, implement new, you know, implement new development in the way that excites us as we've seen photos of, right? Of the, um, as we were going over the metro plan. Uh, but also to protect existing neighborhoods as well, which may be a more important issue, especially for the Midtown area. Next slide, please. Another project that we're working on, um, which I've already introduced and talked about previously, um, is the Development Handbook and ADU Toolkit. So this is just a quick update that we're finalizing the draft and hoping to launch it by the end of the year. So it's coming soon. Uh, this is a sneak peek of the type of graphics and information that we will provide, which will hopefully demystify the development review process, which we all know can be very complex. Next slide, please. And this is a sneak peek of the ADU Toolkit. Uh, another part of this project, and as you can see, we will provide user friendly illustrations like the ones you see on the slide uh, to bring our zoning code to life and make it much easier to understand the requirements. We're hoping that these projects together will streamline the development re- review process and facilitate ADU production. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to spend some time talking about our other planning related efforts, uh, which will complement our long range planning work um, to improve our communities and the built environment. So although these topics, you know, may cover other areas such as transportation and, and the health, um, they are still, you know, very important and will hopefully complement all the long range planning projects that are currently ongoing to really help Milpitas become a better place for our community. Next slide, please. So I'd like to introduce Milpitas On Demand, uh, which is a very important, important program that will help Milpitas transition as development continues around the Bart Station and beyond. This program will be funded by VTA's twenty sixteen Measure B Grant Program. Uh, for your information, Measure B is a thirty year half cent countywide sales tax to enhance transportation systems. And in partnership with RideCo, a transportation consultant that provides transportation solutions for cities, staff apply for the Transit Operations Program, which supports new and innovative transit service models for transit dependent and vulnerable partners. On March fourth of this year, the VTA Board approved VTA Staff's recommendation to award Milpitas uh, one million eighty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dot, um, thirty-two dollar grant to implement Milpitas On Demand, which will be an eighteen month pilot program for an on-demand micro transit service. So I'll go into that, that, I'll go into a little more detail soon. But I'm proud to say that our application received the highest score in the competitive grant program. So next slide, please. So what service will Milpitas On Demand offer? Uh, think of it as a cross between a convenient ride healing service like Uber and the more traditional shuttle or van pool service. Milpitas On Demand will utilize in um, an innovative hub and spoke service model. So what this means is that rider will be, riders will be able to request service through a mobile app and be picked up at a virtual location. So you, as if you look at the map, um, all those dots represent potential virtual locations and be dropped off at one of the four hubs, um, City Hall, the Metro Center Hub, uh, Milpitas Transit Center and also Alder Station. Um, so, and vice versa, you'll be able to go from a hub to a virtual stop and from a virtual stop to a hub. And the goal of the program is to fill the first and last mile gap between someone's home or place of work and the nearby transit stop to encourage the use of existing public transit. Um, you know, if you try to take public transit before, depending on where you live or where you work, you, we, you know, you, you know that oftentimes that last mile is the challenge, right? You take your transit, you know, transit line and then you have to somehow get to, to your destination. And that, and this will hopefully fill that gap to really make it more appealing for someone to take public transit. Alright, next slide, please.
Oh, Jay, can I just add something there? I'll, I'll just uh, uh, with apologies for the uh, personal information, uh, personal anecdote mine. Uh, sometimes when I travel from the airport to City Hall, I tried to take transit and, and it is possible. It's actually very easy to get from now to get from the San Jose Airport to our Milpitas Bart Station. There's a free shuttle bus that runs between the two. Um, and but then you, uh, you know, to Jay's point, the last mile travel, if I'm trying to get to City Hall, then I'm, I, I'm kind of stuck at the Bart Station and uh, unless I want to walk or, or a kind staff person comes and picks me up, that's happened at least once. Or, you know, I can take the bus, but, but one day I, I took the bus and it, you know, it's a fixed, fixed route. So it leaves the Transit Center and then it goes all the way over and then up Park Victoria and around, you know, it took me longer uh, to get from the Bart Station, you know, probably a mile or two up to City Hall that it, it did to their whole rest of the trip. So um, this, this uh, Milpitas On Demand is actually really cool because under this system, I could have gotten on my So, um, this, this, uh, Milpitas On Demand is actually really cool because under this system, I could have gotten on my phone app and called the, the, uh, vehicle here to come and pick me up and then it would take me, uh, on a hub, hub-and-spoke. So I would be going from the hub to the spoke, uh, up to City Hall. And if you're going to your house, for example, and you took the bus, if you're not anywhere near, uh, Park Victoria, for, for example, if you're going to that, that part of town, you'd have to hoof it, you know, the rest of the way. Once you got off at Park Victoria, but under this system, uh, the, it will create essentially vert- what are virtual bus stops and those virtual bus stops can be anywhere in the city. And, um, they'll, they'll be largely determined by ridership or who's, who's requesting the service from what area. And so it, it's a very, uh, you know, this is why it was funded and it received a very high, uh, grade is because it's so innovative and kind of, um, it, it blows up the, the type of, you know, service that we think of as bus service, which is on a, generally on a fixed route and then, and it doesn't change. And you're, you're really at the tyranny of when the bus comes along to, to get from, uh, point A to point B. But if you happen to be at point B, E, or F, you know, you have to walk the rest of the way. And that just, no, nobody takes transit because they don't want to have to walk so far. So, uh, the, this hopefully will, will help solve that issue, but it's, it's a pilot project because the VTA also wants to see how it works. And so they, they've invested, you know, a mil- over a million dollars in the city of Milpitas to see if we can, uh, find a way to make this work.
And you can see the price will beat an Uber.
Uber price, yeah.
Definitely. So, uh, the program will provide twelve, twelve hours of service per day, five days a week, uh, through mini events like you see in the photo, uh, with ADA access. Uh, the maximum wait time will be ten to fifteen minutes. And the great thing is, yeah, it's a, it's a service that is an affordable trans- transportation option. We anticipate launching the service this fall and are excited about how this service will transform the way, um, the patients travel through the city. So I think it's coming at a great time and, uh, I think it really complements, uh, you know, the, the metro plan, for example, and even the, the midtown specific plan update and, and all the other things that are going on. So definitely excited about this project. Next slide. Maybe not, not as exciting of a project, but very important, uh, is the vehicle miles travel policy. Uh, I've already, you know, brought this to the planning commission previously, uh, but I did just want to mention that, you know, the policy which helps, you know, Milpitas transition from using LOS to VMT for sequel analysis, um, was adopted by City Council on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we're currently working on a transportation analysis handbook. Uh, this will include more implementation details for staff and consultants. Um, just, you know, hopefully answering some of the more detailed questions that may come up. And also, uh, it will have some guidance on both VMT and LOS. Cause LOS is something that although it won't be considered a sequel impact, will continue to be evaluated, uh, just to address lo- uh, local traffic congestion. And of course we will, you know, start soon, soon start, um, training staff, just so that everybody is familiar with, uh, this new methodology. Uh, and so that we can also share, um, the benefits of, uh, utilizing VMT to our community. Next slide, please. Last but not least, I do want to share a little bit about the smoke-free, uh, smoke-free ordinance. So on November twenty eighteen, the city received funding to implement a smoke-free, uh, policy as part of the county's Healthy Cities Program, which promotes policies and practices to increase access to tobacco-free and smoke-free communities. In March, uh, of last year, council authorized staff to develop a polit- uh, to, to develop policy options to limit smoking and exposure to secondhand smoke. Next slide, please. So this is a table of, uh, what other cities have done or are doing, um, in Santa Clara County. And as you can see, relative to the rest of the county, Milpitas was a little behind in creating smoke-free environments. I've highlighted, um, with that red box, um, where we haven't, um, you know, prohibited smoking yet. However, we developed this ordinance and expanded the smoke-free areas in Milpitas to include multi-unit housing, including common areas, um, entryways and surface, service areas of all buildings that prohibit smoking and also at public events. So we already prohibit, um, parks and trail, uh, smoking at parks and trails and outdoor dining areas. Uh, but we expanded the areas to, um, to catch up to the rest of the county. Next slide, please. As part of the process, we conducted significant outreach, including a survey that as you can see from this table, demonstrated widespread public support for this effort. Council adopted ordinance in May and we've now turned our attention to educating the public and providing resources to implement these new requirements. Um, you know, which will include putting up signage, uh, for the landlords and property managers, HOAs, uh, also updating leases. So, you know, we really, we really want to make it, um, as easy as possible to implement this. But before, uh, concluding, um, this part of the presentation, I also want to mention that we're working with the Recreation and Community Services Department on a separate but related effort to implement a license requirement for tobacco retailers to better regulate the retailers and also, um, to provide minimum distances from existing retailers to minimize a concentration of, uh, these establishments in certain areas and also buffers from sensitive uses like schools and parks to protect our youth. Next slide. All right. So I know I just covered a lot of information, but I hope this presentation provided some context as you decide on development projects and give you a sense of the long-term plans and policies we're working on that will impact, uh, development in Milpitas. So thank you all for your time and I'm, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We appreciate your, uh, wonderful presentation. Uh, commissioners, uh, since this sort of organic process here, uh, anybody have comments for, uh, Mr. Lee and the staff, um, available this evening? Okay, um, Vice Chair, please.
Just a comment, um, you know, thank you for the presentation, you know, very informative. You said a lot of information, but it's just really good, good stuff to know, you know, around Milpitas. So thanks again.
Thank you. Commissioners. Um, one question for, um, Mr. Lee is the, the, as, as we kind of look at the, uh, the gateway, um, Main Street, the, uh, redevelopment, uh, the infrastructure cost, uh, which maybe, maybe coming to, uh, to these, uh, do we have any sort of, uh, ideas that's gonna be, uh, sort of within the, the scope or this, as, as the, uh, the Casper area or metro area is? Or how, what, what is the, the projected number that we may, we may be looking at?
At the moment, we don't know the cost of all the improvements, but, um, similar to the, the metro plan, uh, we will, uh, part of the scope of work with the consultant is to, um, do a development fee, uh, impact study. Um, and so, you know, we will evaluate, you know, once we have the plan a, a bit more finalized and we know what kind of improvements, um, would work best for the city, then we can get an idea of how much those will cost and what kind of an impact fee we can charge, um, for this area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, commissioners, any other, any other discussion points, questions, may have? Please pipe up. Okay. Um, seeing, seeing none. Um, Director Thomas, any closing comments?
Well, thank you for your attention. I know that was a lot of information. I appreciate Kevin and Jay putting that together. Um, a- again, it's ki- kind of the unseen side of the planning department that we, we work. Uh, a lot of this work is being done behind the scenes and then we, uh, show up at a meeting like this with, uh, uh, usually the draft or, or some type of a check-in point where we want to get some feedback. And, but tonight was really just informational. I, I thought it would be valuable to the commission to have a status update on both plans. And then, uh, we added a few other odds and ends. I'm really thankful to have Jay on board because we had all of this work waiting in the wings and we just needed a, a long-range planner to be able to work on that. So I, I hope that you, um, en- enjoyed in, uh, the presentations and, um, got some value from that, that, but thank you again.
Thank you, Director Thomas, and then thank you, I want to thank all the staff, uh, members who, uh, who participated this evening. And thank you for your time and giving up a Wednesday evening, uh, uh, to be with the planning commission. Um, thank you very much for your time. And, uh, so with that said, uh, we'll, we've concluded that the new, the both new business items this evening. And a little bit of legal verbiage here, uh, to be read, read out loud. Um, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. Uh, this, this time limit shall be strictly enforced. Okay. And the, the next agenda item here is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn this, this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn. May I have a second, please?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair and all in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And the meeting's adjourned and, uh, like to thank all the staff members, uh, this evening. And we, we appreciate your fine work and that, and keep up the great, great job, uh, that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Amazing job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.